Glad to have everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for this Monday, July the 10th, 2017. The hour is 5:31. I believe we have a quorum, so I will call everyone to order. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, would you lead us in a moment of prayer, please?
I don't mind at all.
Thank you.
A few all the bow. Most gracious one, we thank you again for this gorgeous day. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank you for the opportunity to assemble peacefully and to do good work for our community. We pray and ask that what we do this evening will be pleasing in thy sight. These and all other blessings we ask, in his name. Amen.
Amen. We had the pleasure today of having the Salvation Army Day campers with us who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Hi, Letitia. You want to assemble your troops right up here?
Okay, so if you're with the Salvation Army, you want up here. Up here. Up here. Remember everybody, your right hand. Right hand. Right hand. Right this one. There you go.
Come on around to here, you got a hand. Hi, bud. Flag is right there. So, everyone turn around. Let's face the flag. Who's going to lead us in this group?
Oh, careful.
You don't lead when I say group. Group? All right, America, go ahead, girl.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's got to be the best that we've had. Yeah. 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 Hey, Letitia?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Do you have a moment to introduce all of this gang?
Sure.
Have we let the cows out of the barn, so?
Yeah, we'll bring them back.
All right.
So, let me tell you about the Salvation Army.
Yes, please do.
We are a summer day camp. We have 76 children that are enrolled. They are there each day for 10 weeks from 8 to 5. We are faith-based, and we have children that are ages 5 to 12. All right, come on. All right, let's do that.
Lot of them, yeah, they all want pictures.
Okay, come on up. You all come on up front, and I'll introduce you, okay?
Scoot on around here, sweetheart. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, I'll start on that side. That's Danielle Holloway, Miracle White, Wave Miracle. There you go. Carlesia Foster, Eva Collins, Marley Moore, Fiona Collins, Sawyer Duval, Garyon McPherson, and Elijah Foster.
Yay.
All right. All right, come on, Elijah. Thank you all.
Oh, thank you. No, this is great. This is great. Thank you, kids.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. I could start a war by saying, "Everybody to bask in Robbins," but that would not go. Commission, you have before you the agenda for tonight. I would like to offer one addition as item 1A. It will be a resolution concerning the Danville Boyle County Airport applying for a grant, and it is time-sensitive. That is why we are doing this tonight as opposed to two weeks from tonight, when the opportunity will have passed us by. Does that meet with your approval?
Yes.
Very well. With that, item 1 is the approval of the previous minutes for... Oh, yeah, I keep skipping that. I'm sorry.
I understand, bud.
Yeah. We are in a section that we call here the public. This is the public's opportunity to speak on any items that are on the agenda. There will be a second opportunity later on in the meeting to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Anyone want to talk about any particular item on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right on to item 1, which is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting for June the 26th, 2017. Chair will accept a motion at any moment.
Move for approval of the minutes of June 26th, 2017, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cardle, second by Commissioner Terry. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor of the approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 1A is Resolution Number 2017-07-10-02. As indicated earlier, this is for the Danville Boyle County Airport Board applying for a Federal Aviation Administration grant in the amount of $680,000. I would ask our esteemed, long-serving Airport Board Director, the one and only, the ubiquitous, the infamous Stuart Powell, please inform the public, as well as the commission, what your latest coup is here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, I always like to bring good news. You know, we hear so much bad news oftentimes, but the good news, along with these young folks that we just here with the Pledge of Allegiance, I think that's all good news. But, you know, my interest, primary interest, of course, the community, been so many years, 49 years, and this commission has always supported me. But on this last request that you've just made this evening, well, it came up suddenly, is to accept $686,210, I haven't memorized, to apply on a hangar, 10-unit T-hanger, of which we have 22 applicants waiting to fill the hangar. Now, we're going to get 22 airplanes in 10 units, I don't know, but that's better than having where we are now, which is we need these other units. And if I may, just tell you, the other good news, accepted a grant from the state for $789,000 to build that 110-by-90-foot corpet hangar that I have been talking about and trying to get built here for some time, and that's 100 percent grant. This looks like it's 90 percent, and then the state will give us 7.5 percent then of the building of the T-hanger project. So, we'll have the corpet hangar built at 100 percent funded by the state, and this 10-unit T-hanger project will be funded 90 percent by the federal government, and then 7.5 by the state government, and we will be able to acquire the rest of the funding through our selling of fuel and rental space in these facilities. Also, the other point of good news, and I've spoken to you about it earlier, but the folks here probably haven't heard the thing, I'm sure many of you have been seen, visited. If not, please do so, the new administration building that will be built, one of 10 in the state of Kentucky for 48 general aviation airports in the last few years, and we're quite fortunate there. And that building will be completely paid for, the money's in the bank, almost $100,000 to complete paying for that on September 1 of this year. So, I'm real proud of that, and we'll have a mortgage burning then. That was on a state project that they funded 100 percent through a bond issue. So, those are the things that good news tonight. So, that's all I try to bring you, is good news.
And I appreciate your cooperation and help with this.
As I have told you and previous members in your position for many, many years, we appreciate your support, and it is very important for this community and surrounding communities to have an airport of this category, and we're looked upon by the state and other people that come here as one of the very best general aviation airports in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Powell?
I just wanted to note that the resolution in front of you is $6,210 short. So, in your... $686,210 as opposed to the $680,000 that is listed.
Okay.
I move for approval of Resolution 2017-07-10-02.
Thank you, Commissioner Cardle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen, Commissioner Sears and Commissioner Atkins. Any further discussion?
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So, this is 100 percent we're looking at in this resolution? Are we putting... Did I miss something there? Are we putting something up?
No.
No. Was inaccurately listed in the resolution.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Powell, the documents have been signed.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's kind of news we like. You have before you, and item 2 is a reappointment to urban renewal. I'd like to recommend that Dr. Pam Rogers be reappointed for a four-year term. She has served on the committee and has proven herself to be a valuable asset.
I'll offer a motion to accept the reappointment of Dr. Pam Rogers to the Urban Renewal Board.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Sears. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. In the same vein, you have in item 3, under the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments, reappointment, Virgie Johnson, who has chaired that committee very ably, and Donna Fairchild. This would be a four-year term.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to the next one, I think it's important we thank those three ladies, because they have served on those boards several times, but also on other boards, and have served the community very well, so especially thank you, those three ladies.
So noted, sir. Thank you for doing that. Next item is the recommendation that I'll submit to you before the Housing Authority. Like to recommend Ms. Van Winkle be appointed to replace Mr. Hanloser, who passed some four or five months ago.
Yeah.
Her term... Yes, sir.
I'm moved to accept Cindy Van Winkle be appointed to the Housing Authority Board, and at the same time, I'd like to thank Mr. Han...
Hanloser.
Yeah, can't even get his name off.
Hanloser.
Hanloser, for his many, many, many years of service to the Housing Authority of Danville.
Yeah, Tom leaves a large footprint, for sure.
Yes, he's right.
Thanks for your motion. Commissioner Atkins, is there a second? Commissioner Cardle, thank you. Any further discussion?
I don't think any.
She's here tonight.
Yeah, she's here. Cindy, give us a wave.
Hey, there she is.
And then Ian Young, Stephanie Wood, she's the current chairperson of the Housing Authority Board, and then our new executive director is here also in support of our nomination, so.
Ms. Young, would you like to add anything to this appointment, or?
No, we are excited to have Cindy join us as a member of the Housing Authority. Tom's death was very sudden and very untimely, and he did an incredible job with the Housing Authority. The two chispy shoes. Excited about her.
We all have big shoes to fill, because that's her.
Thank you. I believe we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the chair will call the question, all in favor of the recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Then item 5 is the Code Enforcement Report. Ms. Lester.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have the report before you, which I'll just hit a few of the highlights. We had 29 grass-and-weeds complaints. We issued 30 business licenses for a total of $750. We placed 22 liens for $4,190 and recovered $3,674.44. We issued 49 notice of violations, did seven inspections, and we have six criminal summons issued for the properties listed there. We will be following up on those. We issued 137 parking citations for $2,835. We have also received the final draft of the design guidelines from the Architectural Heritage Board. Those will be coming to you in the future for your review, as well as we'll be presenting those to Planning and Zoning at a future date as well. So, they'll have to be approved by both bodies before we'll be able to actually use those. But we got the grant product in to meet that requirement, which was due by June 30th. How entertaining questions you might have before I go into the next one.
I have a... Bridget, on the liens versus... liens placed versus lien recovered, that's about 90 percent. Is that about... Do we hit that mark generally, or?
It just depends. It just depends on what happens during the month. Sometimes we will, sometimes we won't. It just varies.
I'd like to comment that, again, I'm going to say that we really appreciate these reports. I think it's good for us to hear them, and I think it's good for the public to hear reports. Do you think you're more effective now than you were a year ago, or the same, and we just are learning more about it? Seems like we're getting some things done.
We are. And it's all helping. Everything that we've been doing has been very helpful. The new software's been helpful, and adding additional staff is helpful. All of those kinds of things are making a difference. And the publicity, helping to bring people up to speed on education as far as that goes. So, I think it's all working together. Some of the new legislation out there for House Bill 422, changes you've made in the ordinance, it's all working in the right direction.
Bridget, isn't there some new legislation that's being discussed that would actually add more to House Bill 422?
I'm not sure about new legislation. I know House Bill 318 was passed in the legislative session, and that tweaked some language there and allows some joint inter-local agreements and some things that were clarified, but not major, major things in that.
And I know I'm catching you flat-footed on this, but maybe at some point, we could have a brief rundown as to what that new legislation would offer us and how you might see incorporating it into your activities?
Sure. I'm glad to do that.
Maybe we do that next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Then, you ready to go into the next?
Certainly.
Okay. 311 West Main, we just wanted to give a quick update on that. On June 30th, we were notified by the current property owners, Andrew and Ann McCroskey, that they had sold the property to Hamlin Company LLC. And the same day, we were notified that they had sold the property to Tim Montgomery. So, Tim Montgomery is the new property owner. He has been advised and is aware of all the current deadlines that are still the same deadlines. They did not change. He is working with Codes Enforcement very closely. We've been in and out of the building numerous times, and he is in compliance to date at this point with where we are, so.
So, the question in my mind is, do you feel things are heading in the right direction?
He is working very closely with us, so.
And Mayor, if I may interrupt, I'd appreciate if we wouldn't have any line of questioning to that degree and keep it purely administrative at this point. Allow... The deadlines have been set. Allow Mr. Montgomery the time to either meet those or not, and then we can address them at that time.
Can we ask what the deadlines are?
You can't... Last time, but they were... Just in a nutshell, there was given, I believe, a 30-day time period to bring the building to obtain an engineering report and also seek a demolition plan or partial demolition plan if necessary.
You have a copy of that in your packet, the notice of inspection.
It's a 14-day deadline up?
It's either tomorrow or Wednesday, but like I said, they are on track with us as far as working with us.
Good.
Would you give an update, a good update, on the issue that was brought to the commission at our last meeting on the South end of Danville? Mr. Jeffries and Mr. Taylor? I can't... I don't have the exact address, but it's been cleared off, and...
I know they were working on it, actually. I haven't talked to the codes officer. We had actually sent out, before he came, we had actually sent out information to those property owners before he got here, but there has been progress, but I don't know if everything's been completely cleaned up.
Yeah, I was called back out last weekend. It was cleared away. I mean, it looked 1,000 percent better, but I got a call, I guess, over the weekend where it's just piled up, you know, and I guess they're waiting for the data, burn it off or whatever, but just say it was almost the next day, someone started taking it out of there, so that was good.
Yeah, that's... We had already sent out the notifications, talked to those people ahead of time, so it all worked the way it was supposed to.
I told Mr. Jeffries, he got it all done.
Yes. Hey, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bridget. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move...
She covered 86.
Yeah. We'll move right on into the City Manager Report. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Commissioners. I have a number of things to briefly mention tonight, first of those being that the City of Danville has implemented a new webpage. It's the same address as we'd had previously, www.danvillekentucky.org. Our earlier webpage was pretty dated. Our intent in updating that was to make it more user-friendly, menu-driven, and interactive with the user, and to also be more timely in reporting city news, activities, and programs. So, we have that up and running. We're still in the process of loading some historical files in there, but I would encourage everyone to look at that and give us feedback in terms of what they like about it or don't like about it. It's not too late to still fine-tune that, and we're in the process of doing that as it becomes fully implemented and usable. Speaking of code enforcement, I would mention that Wednesday of this week, July 12th at 10 o'clock, our code enforcement director, Bridget Lester, and our city attorney, Stephen Dexter... Bridget Lester and Stephen Dexter, sorry, I thought I'd interchange those names. At the request of the City of Harrisburg officials, we'll be holding a code enforcement workshop for Harrisburg city officials. They have asked that we help them by discussing the progress we have made, and we're delighted to do that. So, that'll be this week, and it's always good that we can share our knowledge with other city officials, which we do from time to time throughout the state. The next item I would mention is the fact that the City of Danville does provide or operate a 911 system to benefit all citizens in Boyle County, including those in the City of Danville. We've had recent discussion as we did our budget development process about the need to update that almost 20-year-old equipment that provides... allows us to provide that service to move to the next generation of equipment, both to get to a system that's more usable for all citizens, but particularly for the hearing impaired, where they can send video or text. And we are... have just about completed our development of the bid specs for that, and we'll be sending those out. But clearly, there's a large number of issues that need to be better understood within our community about the importance, vital importance of 911 to this community. And so, accordingly, I would recommend that we hold a special workshop, perhaps next week, to discuss both our plans to upgrade the equipment to better serve our citizens, as well as to address some of the issues that were recently raised by our fine local newspaper in terms of options that may or may not be available to Boyle County and to other incorporated cities in this community. We want to review our process, our call volume, a number of legal issues, a number of financial issues, and just really come to a better understanding within this community about the importance of 911 and what options may or may not be available to us as we continue to provide that service.
What day was that again?
I would request, if the commission is amenable to this, that, given the time to develop a little bit of that information, we try to do it next Thursday at 9:00 a.m. That would be July the 20th, or alternatively, Wednesday, July the 19th, depending on the preference of the City Commission.
I can't do the 19th during the day. I couldn't even.
How about the 20th?
20th is good.
During the day?
Yes. Anytime on the 20th is fine.
You know, the length of time?
I'm imagining that's going to take a couple of hours, probably, at least. So, 9 to 11, or thereabouts, I would say.
What say you, Denise?
I can use the 20th and 9 to 11.
If it doesn't go past noon, I can make it work.
Okay, I don't think it will go past noon. So, hearing that, we will schedule that and simply notice out then, if we can plan to do that. So, that'd be great. And mentioning July 20th next week, I just want to let the public know and to remind the City Commission that Mayor and I, serving on the Working Group for the EDP, RKG Study, it's a lot of government speak acronyms here tonight, but we're going to be meeting late afternoon on the 20th to talk about the structure recommended for the new EDP, if in fact it is implemented. And so, I just want to make you aware of that part of the conversation coming up. And the county officials will be represented there. Mayor, you may recall who else is invited to that rather small group meeting.
Two of the Working Committee, Mr. K. Wood, and of course, the judge, John Albright, and one other from the... representing the Industrial Foundation. I think Ben Nelson plans to be there and moderate, if you will. And my understanding is that Kyle Talente is going to be with us telephonically, I expect.
When is that?
That'll be the 20th, the afternoon of the 20th. I believe it's 4 o'clock.
That sounds right. It's 3:30.
It actually is at 5... No, excuse me. 3:00.
3:00, yes, you're right. 3:00.
Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the 9/11 call center meeting on the 20th of July, which is next Thursday, can I request that we meet at the 911 center for that meeting?
Yes, certainly. We could do that.
Because they still have the training room, right?
There is room in the training room.
Yeah, because that could be really important for us as we hear these discussions, the deliberations, actually, face-to-face with that center.
Excellent idea.
I've actually never been there. I've never been there.
Oh, okay.
Is it just going to be us, or is the county going to be there?
Well, certainly, they're invited. It's going to be an open meeting for all to attend, but it's not contemplated to be a joint meeting necessarily, but rather a explanation of the staff's work effort with the City Commission and getting into broader issues as well.
We're not necessarily inviting them as a joint meeting?
It's not structured as a joint meeting, no.
Should it be?
Well, and as you talk... Think about that, too, this bluegrass, well, here's some information about that center as part of the presentation.
Right. Well, from my point of view, it should not be a joint meeting. We've had private meetings with the county judge on these issues before, and we've kind of outlined divergent paths, and I want to inform the City Commission and the community of what I believe the options are for... are from where I sit, not from where we both sit.
That's, that's what I needed to know, and then we'll take the next step from there, right?
Correct. But I would encourage county officials to attend, certainly.
Okay.
They gotta bring the donuts, though, right?
So, we have a lot on our plate for this, beginning of this fiscal year, where the staff is excited to begin our various work activities, and these are certainly important ones among those, and we look forward to your continued support and involvement and guidance, and with that being said, that completes my report.
Any questions, Mr. Scott? Then we'll move into the next segment of our meeting called Hear the Public, and this is the public's opportunity to discuss any item that has already previously passed on the agenda, Ms. Moore.
My name is Laurie Kagan-Moore, and I'd like to thank the mayor, the commissioners, and the city staff for hearing me today. I'd like to speak about the current Wayfinding signage project. As you know, Mr. Carmen's original proposal for a committee of community representatives was rescinded and replaced by a series of community forums. Since these forums are now the community's only avenue of input, we are especially interested in ensuring that we receive a clear and detailed report of the project as it progresses. We want to make sure we aren't surprised late in the game with a finished product. During the first forum, numerous, numerous members of the community spoke in support of good signage for Danville's cultural attractions, including specific signage on the bypass. In the interest of clear communication and community involvement as the project goes on, I would like to make two requests. One, could Mr. Carmen please speak to the progress regarding the issue of specific signage for cultural attractions on the bypass, since that was the one central issue raised by the community at the last forum? And the second request is, can we please ensure that the meeting is structured in such a way that there is sufficient time and encouragement for citizen comment and questions? And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So noted. Mr. Graham?
Commission, my name is Randy Giff Graham. As previously mentioned, there will always be an element of a minority that desires the rule of the majority, and we experience that here in this community, not so much by individuals, but by a system encompassed within the Boyle County Industrial Foundation. The Boyle County Industrial Foundation has made it known that they wanted six voting positions on the new economic development board, or they didn't want to play the game. Furthermore, RKG consultants have suggested three of the voting members come from platinum memberships or chairman circle members. As you know, such an arrangement will give the Industrial Foundation even more control of the new EDP board, because platinum and chairman club members historically rotate on and off the Industrial Foundation boards. Even now, one of the presidents of a current platinum club corporate entity serves as one of the members of the Industrial Foundation's executive committee. These nine voting members, the Industrial Foundation, will then ensure the employment of the three at-large members if RKG plan is approved. And we've been told in the past to look at Somerset-Palasie County Development Foundation more than one time as an example to follow how we could, in part, operate within, with our economic development partnership. And just a few years ago, in a forum up here at the Arts Center, the current chairman of the Industrial Foundation used Somerset as an example of why we should be investing more dollars publicly. Of course, it wasn't shared that they double our population, it was also not shared that private corporate, no private corporate entity maintains control of the Somerset-Palasie County Industrial Board. It's thus ironic that when hearing RKG consultant representative say he knows of no economic development entity that operates where the board is appointed by elected officials, if I understand it to him correctly. We only have to look to Franklin County, and yes, Somerset, to mention just two, and Somerset just recently voted to have all their board of their economic development appointed by their elected officials. Now, our unfairness of our system here is not going to be noticed by some of our business people. We had a female property owner just a couple of years ago say something about concerned about the president and CEO of our economic development partnership showing her property. Then a couple of weeks ago, another prominent property owner and business leader shared that it was an inherent conflict of interest to have the Industrial Foundation showing other private property, even our former mayor spoke against the Industrial Foundation having control. Let me give you an example of how this conflict of interest can be played out. There is a spec form recently learned that the president and CEO receives from the Cabinet for Economic Development to fill out when certain companies are interested in coming to Danville, Boyle County. On this form, there are questions about property, provided it meets certain specifications that desires certain things like utilities that the companies would be interested in before the companies are even coming to visit. The question is, are other private property owners aware of this form, and where they can be included, saying when their property could be ready to meet such standards? This allows a potential for selling by omission, this is a conflict of interest. There must be a mechanism in place whereby other private property owners are made aware and the ability to sign off on this form. It seems to me it is only fair. The Industrial Foundation chairman said in one of the RKG public forums that they consider the EDP and the Industrial Foundation one and the same. This was reported in the paper as well, and on video. This is one of the many reasons why the Industrial Foundation should not be allowed control of the new EDP board. If we are historically bold, using that new motto, I believe any people in the United States, the Commonwealth, should not have to allow their community to be controlled by a handful within a private corporate entity. It goes against the nature of our founding, it goes against the freedom of a community. As elected officials, I hope you will not endorse them receiving control of our EDP board. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? We will now move into commissioner comments. I'd like to thank the fire, and probably police, too, for what I thought was a fantastic fireworks display. This year, seems like they were more robust than I recall in years past, but perhaps I'm wrong, but I want to thank you for that. And we still, I believe, wrestle with the problem of fireworks noise, well, before the 4th, and well after the 4th, and well into the night, and early morning hours, and, but I don't believe the complaints were as numerous, but I could be wrong.
I was going to ask that question, I didn't know if, Mr. Reston, if you had any idea of how complaints ran this year?
I know we were busy. Two of the same numbers.
Okay. Didn't see any major drop-off from years past, no?
I think it switched locations.
That could be it.
The group that brought it to us last year at this time, I talked to several members in that neighborhood, and they were just thankful, 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 and also, I want to thank Steve Gray for his article, too, I think the article was very timely, and laid out the community's plan, and that was very well received, I think.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Well, I want to make two, I want Mark, Mark, would you come forward and introduce yourself to the, our community?
Absolutely.
He's a summer intern at the Salvation Army, but give a little background, Mark, about yourself.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and Danville community. It's my privilege and responsibility to be here with the Salvation Army. Like the commissioner said, I'm working with the Salvation Army for the next couple of weeks here in Danville. I'm part of a two-year training program with the Salvation Army to become an officer, which is an ordained minister of the gospel, and a business operator for the Salvation Army. So, in about a year, I'll be commissioned and ordained to work in communities, and to minister the gospel to whomever, in Jesus' name, without discrimination. I was born up in Connecticut to two Haitian parents, raised down in Florida, went to school at Florida State University, where I studied some urban and regional planning and anthropology, and now the Lord has led me to the Salvation Army, to work as a minister of the gospel. And so, it's my privilege to be here, and I've enjoyed listening to you all as you discuss plans and, and city business, so thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, welcome to our community, welcome to our commission meeting, always feel welcome.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And he's been working with those.
Yeah.
He's been working with those fine young students that we had lead our pledge tonight. We still on the commissioners' comments?
Yes, we are.
I have a little envelope here, it says, Ms. Olivia Pruitt, 2017 Miss Kentucky Team USA, and it says, donation. We received a request from the, someone for the commission to make a donation, and I did not think it was very appropriate for the commission to use city funds to do this, so I, Commissioner Terry and I have started a little envelope, would like to pass it to the rest of the commissioners, and pass it to the audience. She's going Friday, I think, to Phoenix, Arizona, to represent the state of Kentucky, and you all know how that goes, you know, the student wins the expenses, but a young lady like that needs to have mom and dad, and grandmom and somebody else go along, so we're trying to raise some funds in the community to assist with that endeavor. We have been given a, a challenge by a fiscal court, so have us out tonight, all right? I know, but as it long, and I take IOUs, I don't take plastic, though, not that equipped for plastic, but she's an outstanding young lady.
She is.
Recent Danville High School graduate, and is going to the Florida State University. No, I'm just joking. She's going to University of Kentucky, I think, okay?
Yep.
Yeah. She's following DeMarcus Cousins, is what she's doing, right? She grew up as a DeMarcus Cousin fan, boogie.
Boogie. Anything else?
No, I wish I could give awards, I usually give it awards to somebody here from fun runs, but they've slowed down a little bit, and so, yeah, it's just the heat of summer, right, we just have that Friday night movies going on, and, yeah, just kind of chilling a little bit. When? It'll come up first Saturday of August, yeah, right before the Soul on Second Street, so we'll do an early shout-out on that, which is award-winning. Pioneer Playhouse is going strong, I think we've all been invited this Friday.
Correct.
And so is, so is Westy Hill, the Irish are coming, they're back, coming in this week, I think Camp Play a Lot, or whatever it's called, I can't remember, kind of fun. So, don't have a lot to say, but I think last time, we congratulated Commissioner Terry on her wedding. The next regular scheduled meeting, I will not be here, I apologize, because I am going to celebrate my 40th wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
That young lady has four hellos.
Your wife deserves.
Yeah, the applause should go to your wife, not you.
We are.
Congratulations, excellent, excellent. Anything else?
I don't plan to be up here when I'm celebrating my 40th anniversary.
I'll be, I'll be long gone.
We won't touch that one, will we?
Moving right along, item eight is payment of the bills, which you have in front of you. Do I hear a motion to accept the bills as presented?
I make a motion to approve the bill listed, dated July 11th, 2017, for $445,284.27, and then I say minus the, where the expenses for the person who sent Nixon, and he takes those out, right?
They were minimal.
I will second the first part of that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Cottle, any discussion? Seeing none, chair will call a question, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item nine is the sewer rate discussion. I'd like to call on Connie Allen to address us. With that information, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners.
You might want to move that microphone a little closer to you.
Okay.
There you go.
I was here, well, first of all, before I get started, Ron, I was going to get up here, and the first thing I was going to say was, I really like the new website, because I went to look and see what time the meeting was tonight, and I thought, this is different, and it's, the old one I thought was pretty good, and this one is even better, so congratulations on that. And, and as we know, that's a lot of people's first introduction to your city, and I think it's a good one. I was here a couple of years ago and talked about a water cost of service study, I think most of you are here. Tonight, I'm here to talk about a sewer cost of service study, and I was talking to my husband on the way over here, we were coming to your fine city to go to Brother's Barbecue, as we do every Monday night, and he said, so what are you going to tell them today? And I said, well, I'm going to tell them what I found, and tell them what the rate increase was, and he said, well, are they going to like that? And I said, well, probably not, I don't know of any commissioner that likes to vote on a rate increase. I said, but, the last time they did this, Great Britain was letting go of Hong Kong, so it's, it's been a while, so, other than your, other than your COLA increases, it's been 20 years since you've had a sewer rate increase. I want to give you a very, very brief explanation of revenue requirements and a cost of service study, just to get into this, but I won't dwell on it, I promise. When you hear somebody say a rate increase, typically what they're doing is, they are studying your revenue requirements, they're looking at your budget, and what you need to do in the future, and what you need to fund, and they come up with a number of signifying the revenue that you need to generate, and then, if it's a regular rate increase, they use whatever means they see fit to establish rates to generate that revenue. With a cost of service study, there's a step in between, and what it does is, it strives for cost-based rates, meaning, we want to look at these expenses that we have, and we want to functionalize them, and we want to assign them to the customer classes that caused the cost, and, you know, that is the equitable way of assigning rates, you know, the people that cause the cost are actually the ones that pay the cost, and there's common costs, and then there's direct assignments. If you remember with the water cost of service study, you had several customer classes, and I talked a lot about owner customers versus non-owner customers. Well, with this sewer cost of service study, because this is the first one you've done, we only had four customer classes. Earl thought it was a good idea to start, take a, take a good big step first, and then we'll refine this later, especially when you get your wholesale sewer customers online. And so, we started with four, and that's your residential and commercial class, your industrial class, Parable, and Junction City. And please stop me anytime you want to stop me, I know you've got a lot to think and talk about tonight, but, and I'm available whenever you, if you want to have a work session and talk about more of this in detail, I'd be happy to do that. With the water cost of service study, we actually looked at your rate base in depth, and we assigned a return on rate base from your non-owner customers. We're not doing that on your sewer cost of service study, but we still looked at your rate base, because we want to start putting the pieces together to give you the options in the future, when you bring on wholesale customers, if you want to charge a return on rate base, and that you can. So, because of that, we use the regular cash needs basis, which is what most municipalities which is what most municipalities use. What we're trying to do is set equitable, defendable rates, but at a level that's sufficient to pay your expenses, pay your reserve obligations, and fully fund your depreciation, which that's an easy way to say, make sure you're putting enough money in your capital improvements program so that you can pay for renewals and replacements. It's a very important piece of yours and the staff's responsibility for such a growing city like Danville. You've got to keep the infrastructure up, too. So we took, and I'm going to talk about functionalization a little bit more later down in the suggestions and opportunities, but I took the expenses and we assigned them to cost centers. We looked at how your customers use various parts of your system and we distributed and allocated those costs. And then at the end of the spreadsheet, what you come up with is an expense that's assigned to a certain class and the volume of water that they bought, which in the sewer case, we're using it 100% to represent the sewer flow. So we're taking sewer flow as 100% of water use. So we look at their expenses and their volume and we make simple division. I've told Earl a lot of times, you know, we're going to build these spreadsheets and we're going to work on this functionalization and someday it'll just be math. And it's just simply math. So the, I looked at the increase based on a 4,000-gallon bill, water bill and sewer bill. And your residential, commercial customers, the bill is going to increase about 46%. The industrial volume charges, I didn't base theirs on 4,000 gallons, of course, but their volume charges increased 37%. Parable's bill is going to increase 65%. Junction City's bill increases 41%. You may ask why Parable's is more? And that's, you probably, I'm sure, know they have their own plant. But the other thing that we programmed in there, we put your capital improvements budget almost 100% of your annual depreciation. And I will tell you, this is the first time I've stood in front of a city council or a city commission and was able to say that. So I applaud you. Should you take my recommendations for these rates, you know, feel good that, in my opinion, you're taking a very big step and funding these capital improvements where it should be. Do you have any questions before I go through these suggestions?
I have one real quick about the depreciation fund. Is it separately accounted for? Is it put in an interest-bearing account or anything? Or is it just kept with the rest of the?
Okay, you're asking an engineer to describe depreciation. And I'd tell you.
I will ask young Ms. Michelle.
We have different depreciation funds in the thing and they are in interest-bearing accounts. They're the ones that we have required money to put in. She is using depreciation as a, that's a non-cash item that's in there as what we need to do to put it in back into the system.
Right.
And we do that by repairs, blah, 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 blah. Some of that money spent, some of it's taken out, whatever. But yes, we always keep all our money in interest-bearing accounts unless the government tells us we can't.
Good enough for me.
It's more like equipment depreciation rate.
Right.
Instead of cash.
Like she said, if we were doing, you know, I told you about the utility basis. If you had non-owner customers, we would use that to look at your rate base and do a return on rate base. In that case, we actually look at your annual depreciation and use it as an expense. But you're doing cash needs and I use it, just like she said, as a guide to determine, you know, how much you need to fund your capital improvements. Any more questions before I get to the suggestions? Okay. Different from a water cost of service study, when you look at a sewer cost of service study, you kind of get into the weeds at the plant because costs come from various places. But one of the places that cost comes is from the pollutants that you have to treat at the wastewater plant. So we get into the concentration and the flows of pollutants in wastewater and we look at loadings at the plant. So I ask a lot of questions about BOD loadings and suspended solid loadings and a lot of questions about phosphorus because you recently got a phosphorus limit on your KPDS permit. And one big suggestion that I would have that came up in this is you guys are in compliance at the wastewater treatment plant. At the end of the pipe, you're in compliance. It's great. The Division of Water issues directions on a sampling protocol and their focus is compliance. So they tell Mike where to take the sample and at the end of the pipe, where to take the sample. But when you want to study how well your plant is operating and what loadings your customers are giving you, those sampling points are not effective because they are behind those equalization basins that have aeration. You can see one on the bypass. You're getting some treatment there. And if we look, if we take our sample after that, you're not getting credit for that treatment. So what I would suggest is to start a sampling plan more for operational reasons and not merely compliance. Another thing that I would suggest that we look at is your industrial pretreatment program has two or three customers on it and that may be all that you need to put on the industrial pretreatment program. But take another survey of that and then identify some high-strength, large customer users. Maybe only sample them once or twice a year. But especially now that phosphorus is coming online, you need to, if you ever do have a phosphorus issue, you need to be able to go upstream and figure out where you're getting the loadings from. It's, and I can go into more detail on these later if you want me to. There will be a report that I'll write and I'll talk quite a bit about each one of these in the report. The main suggestion for the next cost of service study is to work on the functionalization of your expenses. And I said the very same thing at Water. I say the very same thing to every city. The more we can tell about where you spend the money, the more we can allocate these costs later on. And like I said, at the end of the spreadsheet, it's just expenses divided by volume. So, you know, when you do your next cost of service study, the staff knows some things to look for and some things to do. And those costs will actually move around. And they, you know, there's the potential for rate decreases as well as rate increases. It just depends on, with that good functionalization, where these expenses end up and how many, and the volume of that particular customer class. You're, the next time you do a cost of service on your sewer, you will have your wholesale sewer customers onboard. And, you know, there's economy of scale. You know, you're going to have, when they come on, they're going to bring some expenses with them. But, you know, in general, there's going to be an economy of scale there. As you, as I said, you fully funded your depreciation on this cost of service study that I worked up. And I highly applaud that and encourage you to always do that. It was around $700,000 this time. It will, that's kind of low for you. It'll, every time you put new capital into the system, that annual depreciation will go up. So it may be harder next time to fully fund it, but I strongly urge you to do so. And the last suggestion I would have is perhaps, and admittedly, the cost is not put into this cost of service study, but perhaps think about adding another employee on and have that employee kind of in a strategic role and devote most or all of his or her time to the sewer utility and your stormwater utility. And I think that will, that will let some of the others concentrate on what they do best and that person can stand back and look at the operation from a strategic point. And, you know, one of the great things about these cost of service studies is when you get in there and you functionalize all these costs, it tells you a lot about your system and it shows you areas that you might can save some costs or areas that need more attention. So with that, I will warn you that the report's coming and I could talk about this stuff all day because I think it's kind of neat, but I'm sure you guys have other things you'd like to hear tonight.
Are there any questions? Any questions or comments?
I don't think I'm intelligent enough to ask questions your way above my head on all this. I don't think you introduced your Connie Allen, certainly, but your Salt River Engineering. You didn't say that, did you? Okay. Good deal.
Well, tell us the implications from the results. When you read the increases, I could hear some moaning out there in the audience. Tell us what that means.
Let me help you with that, if I may. The, for the residential, commercial consumers in the city, what that translates into, 4,000 gallons is about 534 cubic feet. We bill on a per 100 cubic foot charge. So on a monthly basis, that today, the in-city sewer rate would be $18.36 for 4,000 gallons. What the proposal that she is submitting to the city indicates is that that bill would go to $26.81. So it goes from $18.36 to $26.81.
Okay. I don't think I've ever gotten a water bill where my sewer bill was $18.36 or less. I must use a lot of water, huh?
It's dependent on water consumption, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, that's drinking water, not sewer. Oh, okay. When I run the water, I run it a sewer bill at the same time. That's what you're telling me, right? Okay. Well, you know, again, I'll say it. This is not good timing for us to hear it, not for the public to hear, but that's an $8.50 increase.
$8.45, sir.
I'm pretty good at rounding, okay.
Yeah.
And that's on a, that's every two months? Is that every month?
That's on a monthly basis, based on the average consumption, which is about 4,000 gallons.
And this has already been placed into, this is already into effect?
No.
These are just my recommendations to you.
Oh, correct.
Wow, so if my sewer bill this time was $35 or $40, you mean it's going to go up?
No, no, she's making a presentation to you and what we'll do is summarize her report and come back with you in two weeks with an additional memo. And then we'll draft some scenarios for you on how to move forward, if that's what you all want to do. And we'll follow your direction, really, on how you want to handle it from there.
So that's when we'll get into what happens if we don't.
Correct.
What happens if we have a lesser increase? Okay, so that's coming at the next meeting.
Correct. And really, you know, and we'll reiterate on the things that you have going specifically tied to the wastewater system. The wastewater plant was upgraded in '98, the last time. The, it is at the end, you have a significant amount of equipment that is at the end of its useful life, which is why you've contracted with HDR to do your wastewater system evaluation. These rates as projected do include the cost for the projected capital tied to our initial estimates on that project, which is similar, implementing these now is, would be taking the same advantage that you took on the water rates as you went ahead and implemented the water rates as you had the information on your existing customers and that type of strategy. So we'll summarize that at the next meeting and we may ask Connie to come back and, but we'll start to move forward and, now that we have the information, and work from there.
Is this also related to the grant that we received? The 900?
No, has nothing to do with that.
Okay, that's something different.
That doesn't have any impact on these rates.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Ms. Allen, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you some more.
Love working with you.
Item 10 is Resolution 2017-07-10-01. This is in regard to the surplus fire equipment bid award. Chief Flug?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, before you have Resolution 2017-7101, which we request that you accept the bid from the McKinney Fire Department for $110 for the aforementioned surplus. We did receive one other bid, but it was from an out-of-town company that had conditions upon the quality and conditions of the equipment. And we felt it would be better to give it back to another fire department that was local.
Do I hear a motion to accept the resolution?
I move to accept Resolution 2017-07-10-01.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you. We are in discussion.
I'm glad McKinney got it, but I was really hoping to score a couple of ultra-elite facepieces myself. So I'll negotiate with him for them.
Hey, Chief, on these cylinders that expire in 2020, 2021, and 2022, why are we putting them in the lot if we've got some additional life to go?
They don't meet the criteria that we have on our new PACs that were part of the capital improvement last year.
Okay, thank you. Any further conversation? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carries. I'm getting a nice no sign that we have no reason for any executive session tonight. Is there any more business to come before this group? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone, have a good evening.